Board Policy Manual. Secretary, I'd like to have you report for us.
Yes, thank you so much. This agenda item seeks approval of the revised Board Policy Manual, commonly known as the Board Book. You may recall at the July meeting, the Board approved the adoption of Rosenberg's Rules of Order, and then discussed the adoption of a public comment policy for its board and subentities, which now you have approved. The revised Board Book includes changes to reflect board action taken at that meeting. The changes are highlighted in the agenda item, so not going to go into detail, but the main point of the revisions is to reflect the adoption of Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which also include changes to Section 2.8 to clarify the Chair's ability to fully participate in the decision-making of the Board, including participating in the debate, discussion, and having the ability to cast a vote. Additional changes include, as per Trustee Tony's request, a new Section 3.5.1 to define what a quorum is. Section 3.9 Voting on Motions includes the Board's action that approval of a motion requires a majority vote of those members who are present and voting. Section 3.9 also includes the action taken at the July meeting that after the vote has been announced, a member who participated in the discussion and was unable to vote subsequent to the vote prior to the adjournment of the meeting may request that a vote be retaken. Additionally, as Chair Duran announced earlier, because the full Board now sits as RAD, the Regulation and Discipline Committee, any references to the Regulation and Discipline Committee have now been removed. And what has been added are references that the Board is now sitting as RAD. And now that the Board Policy, I'm sorry, the Public Comment Policy, which you have now approved, has also been included as Section 3.12. And the append, the policy itself is included as an appendix, Appendix E. And we also made a number of other edits. These changes include language to clarify that subentity officers and members are subject to applicable provisions in the Board Book. And we also made minor corrections to the charters of the subentities and removed outdated information. I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you'd like, I'm happy to share via Zoom any of those changes that we just discussed.
And I just want to say for Trustee Tony's benefit that I understand from Louisa that she did make amendments, further amendments to the Board, but from the original posted version, based on your feedback. So I think what is posted should reflect the changes that you identified, the addition of the word staff, another change, a definition of quorum. And, and then I did want to note that we struck the reference to the admissions ceremonies because they, in fact, no longer occur.
Thank you for letting me know that. You know, part of it is, the version I have is Monday night's version that's saved in my folder. So I, you know, thank you for letting me know that. And I really appreciate it. And so quorum is now defined as the majority of those who are currently appointed, right? So that right now it's 11, quorum would be six, not seven, which 13. That's my understanding of what the spirit of what we adopted was. And I want to make sure I'm, we're all in the same understanding. That's correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good, very good. That, I think that helps a lot. There was one other thing I was just trying to find where, you know, the part, or did we already do this? I don't remember. Remember the Rosenberg Rules part where it says that the Chair can vote? Is that in here somewhere? I'm having trouble finding it, I'm so sorry.
Yes, it is. It's, it's included as part of the, let me see.
It's 3.9? I'm trying to find it, like, quick.
Yes, I think it is 3.9.
I, and, and maybe you have it in the subentities? I just want to make sure that it's clear that it applies to subentities. Because, you know, at some of the meetings today, there was lack of clarity as to whether the Chairs of the subentities could vote. And my understanding is that the intent with Rosenberg applying to everything is that not only the Chair, Board Chair, but it would apply to, you know, subentity and committee chairs too. Committee chairs, Finance Committee, yada, yadas.
Yes, so we did also include language to clarify that officers of subentities and members of subentities are also subject to the provisions in the Board Policy Manual.
Okay, my, my, I think my last question I have down here is 5.2.1. On the budget, I just think it's good, at least, just as a tiny thing, to just say that the fiscal year is January to December. It doesn't say, I don't think it says it anywhere. It's just a good thing, because we talk about the fiscal year but never define it. It's my suggestion. I think it's minor, but I think it's a good practice.
So any objection from the Board? And to me, what sounds like a clerical clarification, adding a definition of fiscal year in the definitions portion of the manual? I think I saw definitions portion. If I didn't, then, at the appropriate location.
There is no definitions portion in the manual, but there is a 5.2.1, well, 5.2, which is fiscal oversight, and 5.2.1 for budget. So the clarification could be included within that section.
See a bunch of nodding heads. Ms. Doughton, any problem with using what I've just described as, as part of the final motion? If it makes it?
No, no problem.
Okay. Trustee Sewell?
I just want to thank the team that, that worked on this for also addressing, I think, an issue that I raised previously around technical glitches and not being able to, to vote as a result of some sort of a technical glitch with Zoom or the like. The one question I do have is that Rosenberg, I actually thought it might be a little bit simpler to do as opposed to not having to sort of rescind a vote or ask for a vote to be rescinded and have to, to, everybody have to re-vote again. Rosenberg wouldn't allow us just to add, let, add, to, to add on or to ask to be added on. That's, that's a question. But I, I, I do see where this is, this is addressed. I'm just, just wondering whether or not there's not a more expeditious way to do it as opposed to being asked to completely rescind the vote?
Who would like?
I think if Ms. Roberta Boomer is on, I believe she was involved with that. And my understanding is that's the most appropriate way to do that. But I see that she's back on, so maybe she's able to answer.
Sure, thank you. There was a discussion about the best way to do that when we brought it up at the July meeting. And my sense that, that when the Board discussed it, they expressed, expressed a preference for a full vote to rescind the vote rather than a less formal way. It is more formal, but I think that was the Board's discussion, that they were more comfortable with, with having it as a board action.
Okay, I'll accept that. It's not, it's not as efficient as I, I hoped it would be, but I'll, but it's, it's been addressed and I'll accept that, so I appreciate it.
And it can be done as, as a motion without, without objection. So it can be done fairly quickly, the motion to rescind with a same-house, same-call type of action.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll just make an observation that, assuming the Board acts to adopt these changes to the Policy Manual, after all the, all the good work of this subgroup of people, you know, it's going to take some time for us to learn to live with the new rules and, and there'll be some transition. I know that we're a very cordial and civil and helpful group, so we'll get there. Any other questions or comments?
And Trustee Tony, I'm sorry, Chair Duran, just wanted to mention that the, the mention of the Chair having the ability to vote is in Section 2.8, Responsibilities of the Chair.
Yep, I saw that red light. Now, that does refer to the Chair of the Board only. Is there a general convention that would, it's going to apply to the Chairs of the subentities and subcommittees?
There's another provision, yes.
Great. Okay. Is there a resol, there is a resolution. There you have it. We've got one minor change, as discussed earlier, with respect to the definition of a fiscal year, which whoever makes the motion, please acknowledge that they're okay with that clerical correction.
Trustee Stallings, I'll make the motion with acknowledging that amendment and also with thanks to Ms. Boomer and the staff for all of your excellent work on this.
And this is Jose, I'll second and echo all of gratitude.
Great, we've got a motion by Vice Chair Stallings, second by Trustee Cisneros. Can we have the vote, please?
Rotten?
Yes.
Ten?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Hi.
Delacruz, absent, no?
Yes.
The like, absent, Shelby, absent, Sewell?
Hi.
Stallings?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Seven i's, zero n's, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, thank you all. Okay, I'm looking at the agenda. We've got a few items left. You recall that we considered and acted on Item 704, 705. That'll take us to Items 706, 7, and 8. Let me check in with the Board. So I had alluded to a hard stop at 5 o'clock. That has shifted a little bit. We could go to 5:30 if we need to. Is the Board and Staff, Ms. Wilson, are you all okay powering through these three items? Assuming they'll take us less than 40 minutes, which I imagine they will.
Yeah, I think they should absolutely take less than 40 minutes.
Okay, everybody good to stick around? Wonderful. Let's move to Item 706, please. The Proposed Amendments to the Admissions Rules Related to Testing Accommodations, Moral Character, Law Office, and the Practical Training of Law Student Programs. This is a request to circulate for public comment. I've got Ms. Herskowitz, Dole, Sherman, Clark as well. So thank you for attending, and, and we have the report, please.
Yes, let me share this, share my screen. I'm going to do a very brief introduction and then turn it over to staff. Can you see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Now, there we go. So just briefly, what you have before you today is part of a comprehensive review of all of the, all of the admissions rules and processes and procedures. You're tackling them systematically, one subject at a time. We are looking at the rules. We are looking at areas where there's been confusion for the public, where we are trying to identify rules which do not further public protection. We're looking at things that are, that are not clear and can be made more clear. Areas where there is inconsistency in the rules and the processes and the procedures, and areas where in addition to confusion for the public, there is confusion for staff. And so they may not be applying the rules consistently. And the process involves us looking at rules of court, rules of the state bar statutes, all of our applicant-facing materials, including forms and instructions, what is hard copy and what is accessible through our Ames Admissions Info, Admissions Information Management System portal, what we have on our website, what we have on our FAQs, really going through and making sure that everything is consistent, understanding why we are doing what we're doing. We have the processes in place that we do. And making sure that we have the appropriate training. We're using the opportunity to identify the need for, you know, short videos, for example, on how to use a certain, how to complete a certain form through the applicant portal or, or additional information that may be confusing to folks. And so what we've brought to you today are four different proposals that we're seeking to circulate for public comment that have all been recommended to you to go out for public comment by the Committee of Bar Examiners. They address the following items: Testing Accommodations, Moral Character, the Practical Training of Law Students Program, and the Law Office Study Program. We will shoot to bring these four back to you for adoption following a public comment period and a review of the public comment by the Committee of Bar Examiners in May 2023, at which point we'll also bring to you another group of rule proposals that we are going to be developing between now and then. So this really is a very comprehensive effort that the Office of Admissions staff are undertaking. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to talk about it because I am really proud of the work that they are doing and the time that they are putting in to commit to make things more transparent, more accountable, more consistent for the public. With that, I want to turn it over to Christina Dole, who will be talking to you about the proposals, the rule proposals for testing accommodations.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me come in today. I am Christina, as Donna mentioned. I oversee the testing accommodations process. And I'm here to discuss the proposed amendments to the Rules of the State Bar Chapter 7, which set forth the procedures for requesting testing accommodations for the bar exam and the first-year law student's exam. As staff reviewed and analyzed the testing accommodations process, some key themes emerged, ensuring the exam evaluates an individual on the knowledge, skills, and abilities. It is designed to measure and not a reflection of the effects of any disabilities. Other themes came back from feedback that we received from applicants and the disability rights community. The state bar held two testing accommodation stakeholder forums designed to solicit input on the correct process and take recommendations for improvement. Applicants voiced concerned, concerns about the number of forms required, the amount of time it took for final decisions to be reached. They voiced frustration on the costs incurred to be evaluated by assorted physicians, all while taking time away from when the applicants really should be studying for the bar exam. With, uh, go ahead, next slide. With these themes in mind, the state bar developed a revised process for handling the testing accommodations. The streamlined process relies on proof of past accommodations received on high-stake exams. It limits the documentation request to those that are narrowly tailored, and it gives deference to the documentation from an applicant's qualified professional. The fourth theme builds a division of responsibility by substituting a disability accommodations expert to evaluate requests for accommodations. This change eliminates the Committee of Bar Examiners as the reviewing body to ensure that a disability expert is driving the decisions based on their expertise. In addition to ensuring consistency and fairness to all the applicants, this should also shorten the review process timeline. Committee, the committee participation still remains in the rules proposal as an oversight body, ensuring staff is carrying out the process consistent with the rules. The TA items attached to your agenda include the new TA process, process listed as the framework, and two new streamlined forms, the testing request form and the qualified professional form. Both of these are listed as Attachments B and C in your agenda item. The framework, forms, and rules are guided heavily by the Department of Justice Guidelines and the Consent Decree from the Department of Fair Employment and Housing versus the Law School Admission Council litigation. Let me walk you through the streamlined testing accommodations process. Next slide, please. Applicants can choose to go through the new streamlined process, which grants the same past accommodations if the applicant has taken the first-year law student's exam, the bar exam, or the multi-state professional responsibility exam. As long as the accommodations were approved in the last five years, the applicant submits proof of the accommodation and they certify that they're experiencing the same functional limitations. If the applicant hasn't taken, been approved, or been denied accommodations on any of these above-listed exams, they can still choose to go through the streamlined process to request the same accommodations granted from another bar exam, another jurisdiction's bar exam, or other high-stakes exams like the LSAT, the GRE, the GMAT, as long as they meet those same conditions. There are some conditions placed upon the streamlined approval for past accommodations. Next slide, please. Those conditions, for example, if an applicant is requesting greater, different, or additional testing accommodations than previously granted, or if the applicant requests more than 50% additional testing time or private room, and the applicant is not visually impaired, they need to provide, provide additional documentation in support of that request. The revised rules include the state bar contract with a disability accommodations expert to review accommodation requests, including any appeals or requests to review the original decision. And some of the highlights for the TA Testing Accommodation Rule Amendments. Terminology was defined, language was clarified and simplified. A new streamlined process for requesting testing accommodations was created based on, based on accommodations granted by other testing entities and other high-stakes exams. Under the proposed rules, no request will be denied without an evaluation report by a disability accommodations expert. And while the timeline from the applicant requesting accommodations to receiving a decision is not changed in the rules, I do anticipate being able to process the request for same accommodations approved for prior exam within the past five years quicker than our current process. Until staff gains experience with processing these requests under the new framework and the programming in the admissions applicant portal is updated, it would be premature to change the timeline within the rules. This completes the review of the proposed amendments, but I'd be happy to take comments or questions now or at the end of the agenda item. I defer to the Chair.
Thank you so much. Any trustees have questions on what's been presented so far on the accommodations issues?
And Christina, I'm just going to ask, given that we are trying to get through the rest of the agenda, to just be thoughtful about which slide, how much detail you need to get into now because we are only sending this out for public comment. Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's move on to the moral character piece. Thank you.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Tara Clark. I'm the Program Manager for Moral Character. We'll give a just a high-level overview. So as you may be aware, the purpose of the Moral Character Review is to determine if an applicant meets the good moral character requirement for admission in California to practice law. It's required by the Business and Professions Code and defined by the admissions rules. You have the definition before you. Next slide. And this is a very high-level overview of what our application currently asks for. It's essentially an in-depth background check. So we asked for quite a bit of history from the applicant, residence, education, their employment, as well as essentially any contact they've had with the legal system as a participant. Next slide. So the key things of our rule changes are before you. And I'd just like to highlight a few of them. So we codified current practice and shared consistency within the rules and clarified areas of confusion for applicants. As part of the effort to review the rules and our applications and other documents, we looked at 46 applications from other jurisdictions, feedback from applicants and staff, as well as the frequently asked questions we received from applicants and law schools. Next slide. And this is again a high-level overview of some of the changes we're making to the Moral Character Application. When we did review the applications from other jurisdictions, we were looking to compare the questions that we ask compared to what they do, as well as to ensure that our application reflects the information necessary to conduct the appropriate analysis for an applicant's moral character to ensure public protection. And although we're streamlining the process for the applicants in some of these areas, we're not decreasing public protection since we added new questions to ensure that we still have the information necessary to evaluate their moral character. And next slide, I believe that the end of my portion. So I can take questions now or at the end.
Any questions for Ms. Clark? I don't see any. Thank you for the brief presentation. It was still comprehensive, I appreciate it. Next, please, Practical Training of Law Students. Ms. Sher.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Kathy Sherman with the Office of Legislative Affairs. I'm going to be discussing both the changes to the rules for the Practical Training of Law Students Program and the changes to the rules for the Law Office Study Program. Let me start with the Practical Training for Law Students Program, or PTLS, sometimes also called the Certified Law Students Program. The PTLS program allows law students who are certified by the state bar to provide specified legal services to clients, including, in some cases, making court appearances while working under the supervision of an attorney. The program is really highly valued by both the students who participate and the attorneys who supervise them. Really, everyone who has experience with this program testifies to how well it works and how important it is as a part of the legal education system. Thank you. The proposed changes before you today include two substantive changes together with, with some clarifying changes to improve administration of the program. The first change would allow Law Office Study students and also students in Master of Laws or LLM programs to participate in the PTLS program. Although there's nothing in the current rules that expressly bars LOS students and LLM students from participating, some of the specific requirements, for example, for LOS students that they submit a declaration from a law school official, make it essentially impossible for these students to apply. The Working Group of Members of the Committee of Bar Examiners and admission staff who worked on these changes found that opening up the PTLS program to LOS students and LLM students would be beneficial to those students, hopefully helping them eventually become better lawyers, and that we could do that without sacrificing public protection, given that the strict supervision requirements will still apply to these new categories of students. The second substantive change to the PTLS program is elimination of the requirement in Rule 9.42 of the Rules of Court that students participating in the program have taken or be currently enrolled in courses in evidence and civil procedure. I do want to note here the results of a survey of supervising attorneys regarding this issue. Staff reached out to attorneys who are serving or have served in the past as supervising attorney to get their input on these course requirements. And we did get responses that, that a majority of the attorneys who responded said they did find them to be useful. However, the committee found that, on balance, considering both the experience of other states that don't have similar requirements, and also California's experience with PTLS students who are currently enrolled in the courses but have not completed them, that it would be beneficial to eliminate the coursework requirements, giving more students the opportunity to expand the type of training they receive without any real indication that, that it would be detrimental to the quality of work from those students. In addition to these two substantive changes, the proposed rule package also includes a number of changes that are just intended to clarify requirements for applying to and participating in the PTLS program and to give clear guidance to the staff who administer these programs. Moving on to Law Office Study Program, or LOS. This is a program that provides an alternative pathway to licensure, allowing individuals who complete four years of study in a law office or judges' chambers rather than in a traditional law school to sit for the bar exam. Currently, the rules for the LOS program reflect an outdated model of what legal practice looked like, looks like, requiring study to be during business hours and with the student physically present in the office or the judges' chambers. The proposed changes update the rules expressly to allow a student to complete some or even most of their studies in a physical location outside of the law office or judges' chambers and on a schedule that would be set by the student and their supervisor, so that much of the required weekly one-on-one supervision could take place by remote video connection. The changes also clarify the requirements for different kinds of supervision that must be provided. And recognizing that Zoom calls are never quite the full equivalent of in-person meetings, they have been drafted to require that at least five hours of supervision for each three months of study take the form of in-person contact. Again, the hope is that these changes will open up the program to more participants and help them succeed in completing the program and becoming well-trained, competent attorneys. The proposed changes for the LOS program also include numerous clarifying changes intended to make the requirements for applying to and participating in the program clear to applicants, and again, to give clear guidance to the staff responsible for administering the program. I want to end by thanking all of the admissions staff who worked with me on these changes and the members of the Committee of Bar Examiners who, who worked with us. And I'm happy to answer any questions. who worked with us, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Sher. I'm sure the board, uh, joins you in, in thanking all of those people. Any questions for Ms. Sher on this last part with law students? Don't see any questions, okay?
Very quickly, I mean, it's late and I don't want to get too far afield, but uh, on the supervision of the certified law students, um, who frequently will argue motions or, you know, make little appearances and things in court, does the supervising attorney actually have to be in court with the, uh, certified law student, or can they perhaps review what they were going to do ahead of time and then let the student in there argue on their own?
I believe, so I would have to go back and review the rules. The rule will be the same for the newly, the students who are newly able to participate as it has been. I believe it depends on the type of the case. Um, that in certain kinds of very low-level cases, the student can appear without the, the attorney being, being present, but in other cases, the attorney has to be there.
In my personal view, that probably needs to be tightened up a bit because there are some public agencies, quite frankly, that are uh, using law students, uh, as attorneys to perhaps balance their own budgets, but, uh, I think that needs to be looked at a little bit.
Let me ask a procedural question there then. Um, trustee Broughton, if that's something you think needs to be included in this release for public comment, is that something we can, can or should do on the fly here? And I'll open that, I'll open the question to any staff who've, who have made the question properly first.
Well, certainly not if they haven't looked at the rule. Um, I'm just suggesting that maybe they want to look at it or tighten it up if it's a little vague.
One of the things that we can do after taking a look at the rule, if it's the board's, um, uh, desire, we can, um, when we send it out for public comment, we can specifically ask for comments on that issue, um, and that can help inform what our next steps are.
Does that seem to be, um, an important thing from the perspective of the board when we, when we do this? I, I, I think Mark's point is well taken and, uh, would certainly support that addition. Okay, anything else? Seeing nothing, may I have, um, the resolution for the board's consideration on this release? Give you a minute to absorb all of that. I know you reviewed it in your agenda packet ahead of time. Don't believe that what we've just discussed requires any changes. Um, staff has the direction to, um, make that request when the release goes out. Okay, can I have a motion on the resolutions as presented?
Jose, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I think you have a motion by trustee Cisneros with a second by Noel. If I see no further discussion, then we have the rule call vote, please.
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Hi.
Ella Cruz, absent, no.
Yes.
Selag, absent, Shelby, absent, Soel.
Hi.
Stallings?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Seven I's, zero N's, the motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Item seven oh seven is return from public comment on the elimination of the five-year period of validity for passing bar exam scores. Um, and request for submission to the Supreme Court for approval, Ms. Hershkovitz.
Thank you. Um, as you say, I'm bringing this agenda item back to the board following the forty-five day pu- public comment during which we received feedback from seventeen unique commenters. Um, as a reminder, current law requires that those who, that requires those who pass the bar exam to complete all other requirements for admission, such as receiving moral character, positive moral character determination and passing the M P R E and get sworn in with, within five years from the date of the bar exam, which they received the passing score. If they don't complete all of the requirements or if they complete all the other requirements but simply don't get sworn in within that five-year period, they need to sit for and pass another bar exam in order to get admitted. Um, uh, we advanced this issue after staff received an inquiry from an applicant whose request for an extension of the five-year period to get certified was denied. Um, after reviewing the process that was followed in that particular case, which seemed appropriate based on, uh, on the current rules, staff took a step back and questioned what the purpose of that five-year rule was and whether it really furthered public protection. Um, uh, concluding that, that from our perspective, it did not. We brought it to the Committee of Bar Examiners and worked with them to develop the rule that went out for public comment and that we're asking you for adoption today. First, the proposal would eliminate the, uh, expiration of a passing bar exam score after five years. In making this recommendation, we realized, among other things, that the inconsistency between how we treat those not yet admitted and those who have been admitted to the bar, um, is, is problematic. For those not yet admitted, this five-year requirement essentially says that if you haven't practiced law in California for five years since you passed the exact bar exam, you have to prove your minimum competence once again in order to be permitted to practice. However, for licensed attorneys, we have no similar requirement. The Committee of Bar Examiners concluded that the same rationale that justifies allowing attorneys to switch areas of the law or allows inactive attorneys to become active after a lengthy period of inact, inactive status, both without re-establishing that they are minimally competent by taking another bar exam, argues for removal of the five-year window uh, for getting sworn in and that this rule, they concluded, provides and proves to be an unnecessary barrier, but is not necessary for public protection. Um, however, um, in ensuring that we do meet our public protection mission, the proposal would require an individual who has been certified by the Supreme Court after having met all of the requirements for admissions, but who has not been sworn in within the five-year period to submit an updated application for determination of moral character. Finally, the proposal recognizes that the pandemic may have contributed to some individuals failing to get sworn in for to complete all the admissions requirement under the, the now current five-year deadline. As a result, the proposal applies this new rule retroactively to anyone who received a passing score on the July twenty fifteen bar exam or later. We received seventeen public comments. Public comment chart is attached to the agenda item as attachment A, uh, expelling out the comments verbatim. Ten of the comments agree with the proposal circulated. Five agree if modified, one disagrees. One states no position, but it's unrelated to the cha- the, the change in this proposal. Um, analysis of these comments is included in the agenda item, but briefly stated, um, those that agree with the proposal only if modified support elimination of the five-year timeline, but only if the individuals who pass the bar are admitted, quote, "without further delay, without further obstruction, forthwith as soon as possible" and similar, um, similar ter- terms. Um, no change to the rules proposed based on this, uh, these public comments because adopting these changes would be inconsistent with the requirement that applicants actually meet other requirements such as moral character. Um, staff in the CBE also disagreed with the perspective of the individual who submitted a comment disagreeing with the proposal because of his belief that those who fail to get sworn into the bar within the five-year period are simply lazy and, and inept. Um, but we strongly disagreed with that interpretation and as a result, um, upon recommendation of the CBE, I'm requesting with the board, uh, the board's adoption of these rule changes and, uh, direction for staff to transmit the rule to the, uh, Supreme Court for, um, approval.
Thank you, Ms. Hershkovitz. Does any trustee have any questions on the, uh, very, very nice and brief and fast presentation? Thank you. If there are no questions, is there any discussion or debate? May we see the resolution, please? There you have it. Is there a motion to adopt?
Don't move. Stallings, second.
I think you have a motion by trustee Noel, the second vice chair Stallings. May we have the vote, please?
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Hi.
Ella Cruz, absent, no.
Yes.
Selag, absent, Shelby, absent, Soel.
Hi.
Stallings?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Seven I's, zero N's, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. That takes us to item seven zero eight. This is a request to circulate for public comment on proposed amendments to state bar rules three point six seven one, six seven two, six eight zero and appendix A to that, uh, six eight zero, rule three point six nine zero and three point six nine two and proposed new state bar rule three point six seven four related to various topics. Uh, I see we have Ms., uh, Wen or, and/or Ms. Carol. Good afternoon, Wen. Good to see you.
It's good to see you. Good evening, uh, members of the Board of Trustees. It's nice to see you again. I'm Chair Duran. Again, my name is Dewan Wing and I am the Director of the Office of Access and Inclusion. I'm going to be presenting this agenda item with my colleague Erica Carroll, who is the lead program analyst also in the Office of Access and Inclusion. Um, as Chair Duran mentioned, this, uh, item deals with proposed changes to the state bar rules regarding the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission. And as you all know, the commission is charged with administering approximately a hundred and forty million dollars annually in legal aid funding to over a hundred nonprofits throughout California. We're asking the board today to authorize a sixty-day public comment period for the proposed changes. Erica and I had prepared a short PowerPoint, but in the interest of time, uh, we're going to skip over the PowerPoint and provide you really high-level, um, overview. Um, in your packets, there is a lengthy memo with also, um, several attachments. Um, we wanted to start by providing you with a brief kind of summary of the genesis of the codification process. Um, I'll then turn it over to Erica, um, to provide an overview of the six topics that are, are before you today. So in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, as part of the appendix I review of all state bar subentities, a separate legal services trust fund stakeholder working group was formed. As a result of that process, this Legal Services Trust Fund Commission developed a long-term plan to examine all of its governing authorities, including the state bar rules and as well as various guidelines that have been promulgated by the commission. This codification process was launched in two thousand and twenty and it was intended really to harmonize all of the governing authorities and to codify existing practices have that been, had been developed um, over the last thirty, forty years that had nev- never been codified. Uh, the goal of the codification process was to ensure transparency, consistency, and fairness in the grants administration. And at the beginning of the codification process, we had catalog, catalogued approximately twenty topics. This agenda item presents to you six of those topics. We hope to tackle another eight or nine topics in two thousand and twenty-three and then finish the codification process in two thousand and twenty-four. So at the beginning of the codification process, the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission formed a subcommittee, the Rules Committee, and that Rules Committee was tasked with developing recommendations that would then presented to the commission for approval. Each of the proposed changes that you see today in the memo um, has been carefully vetted and researched and the codification process has been very long, but it has been an extremely thorough process. Um, we have engaged extensively with the legal aid community for feedback and in some instances, we have developed focus groups so that we can gather direct feedback from legal, legal aid providers. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Erica, uh, who can briefly, uh, describe six topics.
Great, thank you, Dewan, and good evening to everyone. Um, yes, I'll just take a few minutes to try to bring out the most salient points and the rule changes. I know there were a lot of materials, so, um, try to keep a pretty high level. And, um, I'll go in numeric order of the rules changes, which may be a little bit different than what was in your materials, so. Um, starting with rule three point six seven one, that's the primary purpose rule under both the statute and the state bar rules, um, grantees that receive state bar funds, for example, legal services projects need to have a primary purpose and function of providing free civil legal services to indigent persons. And the way that we determine that is looking at their expenditures, uh, for providing those services in comparison to their total expenditures in the prior year. Uh, the wording of the rule, uh, as currently written includes looking at their budget for the coming year, but given the demands of the, uh, grants administration schedule and reviewing a hundred applications uh, or on average about a hundred applications each year, um, it, it's uh, unreasonable to wait, uh, to see the organization's budget for the coming year uh, in order for us to get grants out early, um, in January, so. Um, the recommendation is to remove looking at the budget for the coming year and only look at the organization's expenditures from the prior year when making that determination. Next is the definition of civil legal services under rule three point six seven two. So the statute currently has a prohibition on providing services in criminal proceedings, but until recently, um, it did not have a definition for civil. So the statute at, um, in January of this year now includes the definition for civil, which is areas of law traditionally considered civil as well as some exceptions for areas that would fall under criminal proceedings like expungement and record clearing, but um, have applicability and are often provided by legal services providers, so. Um, this rule change is intended to conform to statutory change and then it also makes some changes to the definition of legal services, which previously were more defined by job title, um, than function. So for example, legal services currently indicate that those are services provided by a licensee of the state bar or a paralegal or a law student under the control and supervision of a licensee. Um, but the commission in reviewing that definition acknowledged that there may be instances where attorneys may not actually be providing legal services in their work at times. Uh, and also it acknowledged the change to the practice models of many legal services providers in that they are doing more holistic services and, uh, for example, providing some social service support, incorporating social workers into their practice model, uh, often with the goal of enhancing or improving a legal outcome for their client. Um, and so acknowledging that reality, the new proposed definition for legal services is more focused on the use of legal knowledge and skills or providing services with an access to a legal outcome where a team member is under the supervision of an attorney. Uh, third, we have late submissions, so in dealing with, uh, late applications, budgets or evaluations, uh, the current rules don't have much clarity or guidance for staff about how to handle those and everything is currently elevated to the commission, which has, uh, become fairly inefficient, so. That recommendation is to allow staff some discretion, a small window of discretion to deal with late submissions. And then when it goes beyond that point, it provides the commi- commission with um, factors for consideration about how to deal with late submissions, whether to accept them, to accept them with conditions or to deny a late submission, uh, when necessary. And we're hopeful that that change will really increase efficiency for both staff and the commission. Um, next we have audits and in-kind donations, so again, we look at an organization's expenditures in the prior year uh, when they apply for funding and the vast majority of grantees are required to submit an auditive financial statement submitted by an independent certified public accountant. Um, the rule currently allows smaller organizations with gross corporate expenditures under five hundred thousand dollars to submit a reviewed financial statement. Um, but the rule is not clear as to whether that also needs to be conducted by an independent CPA. So this rule change would clarify that, but regardless of whether it's a reviewed financial statement or an audit, it must have an independent CPA involved as well as, um, allowing those smaller organizations that exceed five hundred thousand dollars in gross corporate expenditures to submit a reviewed financial statement when the only reason for exceeding that threshold is due to in-kind donated services. Uh, both, we have complaints from the public against state bar funded grantees. Um, so on occasion, the state bar will receive complaints from the public against grantee organizations uh, regarding their compliance with the state bar rules. So for example, alleging that a grantee might be charging for services that should be offered free of charge, things of that nature. So this, uh, proposed rule change would be adding, uh, defined timelines for processing complaints to avoid them languishing uh, as well as increasing efficiency with the use of an advisory body and then a final decision maker in the commission's executive committee, um, if the complaint is not resolved sooner than that. And then finally, we have a new proposed rule. Um, all of the prior rules I mentioned are, are amendments, proposed amendments, but this new proposed rule three point six seven four deals with income and indigent persons. So the statute was recently changed again earlier this year to increase the income eligibility for individuals who could qualify for free legal services from a hundred and twenty-five percent of the federal poverty level to two hundred percent. And so this rule change will again conform to that statutory amendment um, as well as provide a definition for income to assist grantees in uh, creating their eligibility guidelines and, uh, creating some uniformity, um, across the grantees in that respect. And then it will also give greater guidance as to how to determine whether services are for the benefit of indigent persons when working with a group or a class of persons. Or a class of persons where income eligibility cannot be determined the way you would when working with an individual client. So that is a quick summary of the recommended rule changes and the new rule. And, you know, the commission in its charge to recommend. Changes to the rules regarding eligibility requirements and and grants administration is requesting that this be put out for a sixty-day public comment period.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. I think I think we all recognize that tremendous amount of work went into all these varied topics and certainly appreciate. Your efforts there and the quick presentation as well. Any questions for Erica trustees or Dewan? Okay.
I have one. I have one for you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Here's a question for you. Should I? I know we're always setting it up for public comment, but I'm I'm concerned that because I am a. My firm is one of the legal aid programs that are being discussed to have these changes, if I should recuse myself.
Certainly, that's a personal decision, typically upon the advice of counsel, I will, I will say. If you were going to recuse, the time to do it would have been before the presentations, we will just remove yourself from the consideration of the item. I, you know, I would leave it to your discretion at this point unless the general counsel has something different she wants to offer. I think the 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 action that we're being asked to take here is to put out for public comment only. I don't know that there's any. Any, you know, any way that that would implicate a financial conflict of interest, but I could be corrected, of course.
And I think Brady Doer with the Office of General Counsel did prepare an opinion. That actually was shared with Luisa and I about trustee Noel's participation when he was first appointed. So I think we need to close the loop on that. I don't recall that it would, that it addressed something that like this going out for public comment. Versus taking action, but I do know that he did that, Elaine.
Yeah, and he's on the call if Brady would like to join in. I I would say that if there's, if there's ever a doubt, it's always good to abstain, even if there's not a, an actual conflict. You can recuse yourself from on the basis of appearance of a conflict of interest. And if if you'd like to do that, you may do so now. And we can circle with you before the vote and share the memorandum and here's Brady as well. There are exceptions when it applies to, for instance, the public generally, et cetera. That that may put you in a different category, but if you feel that. Personally, it may even look like an appearance of conflicts, then that's within your discretion to make that decision.
Yeah, the longer that the the presentation went on, the more I was thinking about Chair Duran and saying, shit had done at the very beginning. Because obviously. There would be even an appearance of conflict by others who might see it that way, and so. I will recuse myself and I assume that means I have to leave the meeting.
Yeah, I I think that that's that that would be the route I would take if I were, if I were recusing myself. And before you, before you drop off, Greg, I will just note this is the last item on our agenda, so. I don't see a need for you to return for the adjournment unless you really, really want to, in which case we'll let you know when we're ready, but. Otherwise, we'll say good night to you for for now and then see you.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.
Okay. Brady, thank you for your availability to answer the questions, but it looks like we're good. Any other questions from the trustees on the substance of the item? Seeing none, can I have the resolution, please? Okay, there it is, putting out for public comment the various. Topics and rule changes that have been discussed. If there is no. There's no question or commentary or discussion, can I have a motion, please?
Jose, I'll make the motion.
A motion by Cisneros, is there a second? We're almost there.
I'll say again, couldn't find my button again.
Thank you, Mr. Broton. Motion by Cisneros, second by Broton, may I have the vote, please?
Broton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Hi.
Ella Cruz, absent, no. Recused. Selag, absent, Shelby, absent, Soel.
Hi.
Stallings?
Stallings has left the building.
Oh, okay, thank you, absent, Tony.
Hi.
Five eyes, zero needs, one recusal, the motion carries.
Dropping like flies. Okay, that takes us to the end of our open session items. We are set to reconvene tomorrow morning at nine thirty. To reconvene in open session to take a roll to ensure we have a quorum. We will announce the closed session items and then move into closed session tomorrow morning. Quite a lot of work done today, folks. Thank you all for hanging in there to the to the very end. Thank you, Ms. Wilson and and all of your staff, Ms. Adipati. And thank you for a very productive meeting. We look forward to seeing everyone tomorrow morning.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
We are adjourned.
Did you say nine thirty?
Nine o'clock isn't what I show.
Oh, okay, good. That's what I I missed for you.
Yeah, if I said nine thirty, I misspoke. Sorry about that.
Yes, he did, unfortunately.
We'll see you all tomorrow morning. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.